So I'm here to do a quick handoff. Our OR Core Steering Committee has been meeting with the Neuropath Core Steering Committee, and we hope that this is the first of a number of collaborative activities. So I want to do the handoff to my colleague Brittany Dugger from UC Davis, ADRC, who's going to be leading this next session, part of the session. So Brittany, it's all yours.
Well, stay up on the stage because this is what collaboration looks like.
We found that we had so much to talk about that we didn't have enough sessions. So we're doing this here, but expect to see more in the future because we just were the tip of the iceberg.
I know. We got to see what's underneath. So thank you all virtually and for being present here. You took time out of your schedules to be here to listen to this panel. And again, this is a collaboration. And unbeknownst to each other, when we were having our steering committee meetings, we were both focused on brain donation. And lo and behold, there always has to be the Rosetta Stone, otherwise called as Dr. Nina Silverberg, in case you wanted to know that little thing. And so she put this together, and we have some great panelists today that are going to offer their paradigms on what has worked well for brain donation, what is not. But I'm not a very good moderator. We pulled in a ringer in Dr. Glover. So Dr. Glover, would you like to take it away?
Thank you, Dr. Dugger, and thank you to the organizers of the OR and Neuropathology Corps. So I have fellow speakers with me. We have Nancy here, Katie, and Arlene. We're supposed to have Darby coming in a moment. Well, I am your moderator for this special session on brain donation, and I have special speakers with me right here. Here's Darby.
Thank you. I'm Crystal Glover. I'm your moderator. I'm also the OR Core Leader at the Rush ADRC. So I'm going to give you a quick run-through on what to expect today. I'm going to focus on, as your moderator, this session and why. Why are we focusing on brain donation during this time as we think about next steps in our ADRC history? And then for each speaker, they're going to have five minutes where they introduce themselves, they're able to discuss their relationship to brain donation, but also set up takeaways for what are they thinking, how can we apply this at our own ADRCs, what have they learned through their own research, their own perspectives, and their own experiences? Then we'll have about a 30-minute panel discussion. I would like to pose questions of my own. I'll also ask the audience to pose questions, those here and online. So the session purpose is to focus on brain donation. We still think of it as the gold standard. It is needed for a definitive dementia diagnosis and understanding disease trajectories. As Dr. Monica Parker, Dr. Farrar Edwards have noted, it's the ultimate marker of retention. I always think if someone agrees to brain donation, that means that they are truly engaged, they would like to find really deep solutions for ADRD, and also they are a friend of our center maximally. So but we do know that there continues to be not only low rates of brain donation consent, but also completed brain autopsies once someone passes away. And I believe in others that this severely limits our understanding of aging and ADRD. So the focus of this panel is to inform our brain donation approaches from diverse perspectives and methodologies. So as we asked all speakers to talk about their relationship to brain donation, I'll spend the second half of my five minutes or so talking about my own work regarding brain donation. And as Dr. Annalise Philippiak has noted, many of you have seen these slides before, so I will emphasize several points on each of the slides. When I joined the Rush ADRC back in 2016, I thought of brain donation as the most invasive thing that someone could agree to in terms of research participation. And I wanted to understand the perspectives of older Black, Latino, and Whites of lower income specifically about why they either said no to brain donation or said yes to brain donation. So I designed a two-phase mixed methods research study, first phase qualitative, second phase quantitative. And what we found out qualitatively is that family is a huge motivator, facilitator of participating, not only in research, but specifically in brain donation. However, especially among older Black and Latino adults, they may lack either family buy-in or family follow-through. There's nuance there. So for older Black adults, even though they're saying, yes, I want to donate my brain, they may not have discussed this or got agreement from their family members. So once a person passes away, then we may not procure that brain because they can't bring themselves to autopsy. So that means there's a weak link in terms of autopsy completion. On the flip side, for older Latinos, they are thinking that we've made this decision together in terms of brain donation, but during the grieving process, they may not want to follow through with the brain donation, calling the ADRC, working through their grief, what does it look like to have an autopsy, and how does this impact internment? So took it to older adult children or adult children of older Latinos, and if you look to your bottom right, they're noting that very same thing. Can you make this relatable from a family-centered approach? Tell us, how is this different from organ donation? How is this facilitating strategy building for dementia? And what does this mean for internment processes for my loved one? So we incorporated these different strategies at the Rush Alzheimer's Disease Center. In part, the bottom two points here is a focus on family. How can we engage the family from the beginning of the research process, particularly around brain donation? And to make sure to emphasize that these family members know that they are integral to the research decision-making, but especially during brain donation and autopsy completion. So for the quantitative piece in the Minority Aging Research Study led by Dr. Lisa Barnes, we see here that a main facilitator quantitatively is family caregiving, so providing care for someone in your orbit. For older Latinos, we do see that there is higher levels of English language proficiency, use, and acculturation associated with higher levels of brain donation consent. So the main takeaway messages from me is that family as participant. So as we're thinking about the research process, brain donation as the end, families should be at the center. We need more than diversity in populations. We need it in expertise, the people making decisions at the ADRCs, the methodologies used or approaches, the methods or our tools, so that informs our engagement and educational approaches. And lastly, being seen as a resource, ADRCs, faculty, staff, you name it, we should be there for participants and broader communities. Really, it's all hands on deck. So I think I made it within those five minutes, and I would like to introduce our first speaker and panelist, Tish. Well, I think Tish is online. Hannah?
Yes. Here she comes.
Okay. But one second, I would like to say Nancy, sorry, come on up.
Oh, that's... First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for all that you do. Having been a participant in the HOPE study since 2011 alongside my husband, it means a great deal to me to see you all and know what you do. Thank you. My name is Nancy Cherico. I live in Rhode Island. And as I said, my husband Joe and I joined the HOPE study at the Boston University in And in many ways, our decision about brain donation were the same reasons that we decided to join this study in the first place. At the time, my husband's sister was living with Alzheimer's disease, and he felt particularly powerless about anything that he could do to help her. So this was one of the ways that he could do that. And for me, I knew that Joe had been diagnosed with MCI, and I was really predicting that there was going to be progression to full-blown Alzheimer's or another dementia. So and again, it was the feeling of when you feel powerless and helpless in front of such a devastating disease, you have the urge to do something. And that do something for us was joining the longitudinal study. Side light is that it was also something that we enjoyed together. We would drive into Boston together and then go out to dinner after. And we particularly enjoyed the young research assistants, meeting each one and hearing their stories too. I remember that first meeting, actually, when there seemed to be reams of paper and lots of signing, it would sort of reminded me of buying a house. And when it came to the issue of brain donation, it seemed like the natural final act of our participation in the program. It seemed very natural to us. And it just involved signing a consent form, perhaps renewing that signature periodically, and then making a phone call. It was as simple as that. And frankly, that was a lot easier than all the hours of testing and the blood draws and the brain scans and so forth. It was really especially empowering to know that the study of a part of your own body might contribute to research that could lead to treatments and cure. It was like contributing some hope for the future. When Joe died in 2022, making that call to the Boston University to have the brain harvested was the simplest and the easiest of all the tasks that I had to do. You can imagine, I'm sure you've lived through it, making all those arrangements at the time of death. And I trusted that his body would be handled with respect and be returned to the funeral home promptly for cremation. And finally, the autopsy report itself was incredibly important to me, to understand a definitive diagnosis and to help me understand what it was like for him to be living with this disease and have that brain be so compromised. By the way, my son is ready to make that call when my time comes as well. So I would like to read for you now a poem I wrote. Being a poet, of course, my response to all this was to write a poem. So with your permission, I'd like to read that now. "Brain Autopsy Report." He hardly had a chance, condemned by the double diagnosis, Alzheimer's plus vascular dementia. The doctor explains line by line how tautangels dismantled the architecture of neurons, eroded the frame of memory, stressed the load-bearing beams of perception, how amyloid plaques spread between both inside and outside brain cells like mold on and between walls, how stiffened, clogged vessels slowed the flow, caused minor leaks and a major stroke. Amazed that such a broken structure could have housed a living person, a person who was still a person there beside me to his end, my mind lightning flashes to scenes of his depression, paranoia, accusations, and my sometimes less-than-Florence Nightingale responses. I wish I could hold him in my arms, as now I hold the description of his poor wrecked brain. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nancy, for sharing with us. I'm so happy you agreed to do so. Next up for our speaker and panelist, we have Katie.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Nancy, what a hard act to follow you are. Let's do one more round of applause for Nancy's, that poem. My name is Katie Brand. I'm the Director of Caregiver Support Services and Public Relations for the Massachusetts General Hospital Frontal Temporal Disorders Unit. And I see many friendly faces in the room today. In fact, that's what I told Nancy before we came up. I said, this is a friendly room. They want to hear from us. And by us, I mean families. Many of you know that it wasn't a job description that brought me to my role today, but in fact, the first time I heard the phrase frontal temporal dementia was when I was sitting with Dr. Albert Galliberta at Beth Israel, and my 29-year-old husband received the diagnosis of behavioral variant FTD. Just over three years later, on April 19th, 2012, my husband lost his life, just 21 days after our son Noah turned four and only months before we might have celebrated a decade of marriage. And in fact, that was the first moment where I had the opportunity for a power play against the disease that was trying to make all the decisions in our family's life. I was able to make the decision to donate his brain. This was incredibly empowering for me. It was the opportunity to uncover some of the secrets. FTD felt so insidious, like it was just going to sneak into our family, change all of our plans, steal some of our family members. And this was my chance to uncover those secrets. This led to the opportunity for Mike's case to be featured in a grand rounds. His clinician was Dr. Brad Dickerson, who many of you know, the director of the MJH FTD unit. And Dr. Dickerson invited me to speak at the end of those rounds, to give the caregiver perspective. And it was after that experience that I approached him, and I said, I think that you should hire me as a consultant for the unit. And I'm sharing this piece with you today because I know there are many directors in the room. And he said, well, I don't, what does that mean? What, you know, what would that be? And I said, you know, just hire me for six months. I promise I'll raise more money for you than you'll spend on me, and I want to work on your brain donation program. Because I thought about how I had filled out some black and white pieces of paper, but to me, brain donation was the catalyst for my role as an advocate, my opportunity to fight back. I didn't have the ability to write a big check. I didn't have the energy while being a single mom and continuing my role as a family caregiver for my dad, who's a veteran living with Alzheimer's disease, to start a new organization. But I could do this. So that led to me working as a consultant, running our first Black Tie Gala today. In fact, if any of you are interested, I sell tickets. I'm planning our ninth Black Tie Gala on October 25th. We've had countless community events. I've helped to raise over $2 million for the MJH FTD Unit's clinical research program, running support groups, working with families to develop educational materials about brain donation, talking with families about the opportunity to participate in this aspect of research as a way to raise their voice. In fact, I just spoke at the International FTD Conference in Amsterdam, and I spoke to family caregivers and said, you know, I understand sometimes when you're navigating the medical appointments and the act of caregiving, it's so hard to participate in research. And just like Nancy said, that phone call at the end, in many ways, at Mike's memorial services, that telling people that he had donated his brain, it gave a sense of peace, a sense of calm, because it was just so unbelievable that there was something invisible that took away a person that we loved, such a bright light. So today, I'm honored that a large part of my role in the FTD unit is to work with families. In fact, I responded to an email. I know I missed a call from a funeral home while I was sitting here who had a question. I've spent many holidays, as I did yesterday, on the phone with a family member whose loved one is about to pass. I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing, because many families, Alzheimer's, FTD-related conditions, they come out of nowhere. But this is a way for us to fight back. This is a way, as Dr. G talked about, for us to be true participants in the research process. I'm honored to be able to continue to work with all of you to come up with educational materials, culturally sensitive materials, person-centered materials that can help more families participate in a program that I found to be healing and inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you so much. We do have one of our speakers who's online, so I think we're ready to gear her up. Her name is Tish. She is the person that began the Brain Donor Project, and so if we can have Tish on the screen here, that'll be great.
Hello, everybody. Not sure if you can hear me, but I'll go ahead, as if you can. So my name is Tish. Oh, sorry.
We can hear you, Tish, but we can't see you, and I believe we want to see you.
Maybe we'll start with my slides. I'm not sure what they have planned, but I guess it's checked, so they figured they were in. Or they thought it was the same as anatomical body donation, in which the brain is not used for neuroscience research, so we had to do some education on that point. They thought you had to have a diseased brain, and that's not the case, as everybody knows healthy brains are needed. It's also not disfiguring and no additional costs to the family. So with all those things that needed some education, we started a nonprofit called the Brain Donor Project. The year before my dad died, the NIH had put together a structure of brain banks to make the tissue more available, but they just hadn't had a chance yet to do the public education part. So we decided to support this structure called the Neurobiobank by raising awareness of the critical need for this tissue and making it easier to become a donor. So here's how that works. Here's where the brain banks are first. We work as a conduit to help connect future donors to one of the banks. The way it works is that we made it easy to start the process at our website by visiting braindonorproject.org and completing a brief online form that's accessible by a button in the upper right-hand corner. You can do it on behalf of somebody else, and we can deal with imminent situations as well as people registering in advance, far in advance. So the form is mainly contact info and room for a diagnosis if there is one. So we then decide which of the brain banks makes the most sense, and we go ahead and send their forms if we're not in a hurry. Then we sort of hand the relationship off to the brain bank. They provide a 24/7 phone number for the family to notify. The procedure happens at the funeral home, the brain is removed and shipped, and then the body is released. So people have mentioned this before me today, both Katie and Nancy, but there are two big benefits. One is a really strong sense of solace and comfort that comes from knowing that you're going to have a hand and a positive thing coming out of a great loss. And the other is that the family gets a copy of the neuropath report, which can be very helpful. So I hear about the comfort of that all the time. So you might be wondering who was signing up. We are, we just celebrated our eighth year in operation, and we're closing in on 25,000 people who've at least taken the first steps to become a brain donor. About a third of them are controls at the time they sign up. You can see there's a wide range of ages. And I have to tell you a quick story about that. The oldest living man in America at the time, I'm not violating any privacy things because he got pretty famous. He died at 110 years old back in June, and he'd been writing a regular blog until the month before. His daughter got in contact with us and donated his brain. And so, you know, she and I joked that he may be the superest of the superagers, but he ended up getting us a lot of attention in LA Times, USA Today, two of them in the New York Times. So he helped us make some really powerful noises about this. But we do face some challenges, as science does from time to time. And these are the biggies right now. There's a significant lack of brains in the early disease state. So it's incumbent on us to try to reach out to people shortly after diagnosis. You know, they know what the brains look like when the people pass, but they need to understand in between, if possible. And we've talked about it a lot. There is a lack of brains from marginalized communities, many of them. And we need to do a better job of understanding how to invite people to consider that. There's a lack of controls, even though a third of the people are controls when they sign up, they don't stay that way. There's also a significant lack of young adult brains and brains of people with rare diseases. So these are important groups that we need to work with. And so what I tell people is when you consider brain donation, think about this. We all spend a lot of time thinking about our stuff and our money, if we have any left, and where's that going to go? But the most important gift we have could really advance science. So that is something that I want people to consider. And for this group, for you all, there's a couple of other things I think I'd like to mention. I know there's a tremendous outreach core of people, core and core of people there, but they're not the only ones who should be talking about brain donation. We need to consider why we tiptoe around this invitation. I'm not suggesting it doesn't require sensitivity. Of course it does. But one of the things I've learned lately is many, many clinicians at places I've exhibited and folks that I've talked to are getting this question from people. And so we have to be a little less hesitant about making sure that folks know about it and also making sure that folks who have a disorder for which they're being studied, maybe AD, that their family and friends need to understand how they can also support science by donating their control or whatever brain, because almost all of them are needed. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Tish. Thank you for being here, even if you have to stay home. And I would like to call up Arlene, though, first.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Arlene Fausten. I'm a neuropathologist and co-leader of the Neuropathology Core at NYU. And thank you to all my co-panelists. We got to meet briefly on a meeting, which was great, and thank you to Brittany for bringing us all together, and of course, Crystal for moderating for us. One of the key things as our Neuropathology Core that we think is essential for participant retention and subsequently brain donation is being an integral partner, being communicative and involving all of our cores. As you can see just from my slide, we communicate and we are involved with all our cores, particularly with our OR Core. And in doing so, we're able to come into the communities. How do we do that? Many different ways. One has been already described as with our community board leaders, and we meet with them, and they are involved in helping us to open that discussion in with the community, how best to do it, how best to come in there. And they also invite us to physically come in. It's not often that you have neuropathologists coming in physically into the centers. Just to give you a little background about me, I started actually as a brain donation coordinator. So I came in first in that aspect, then was trained to do the UDS evaluations. And so I was a clinician performing the assessments and then having that further conversation during my neuropathology fellowship, talking to participants and say, yeah, it will be me removing your brain, and these, you know, what questions do you have? And we were able to discuss that. Now, still growing in my career, but being as a core leader and a faculty member in neuropathology, I'm still able, through the support of our OR Core and my center, to still be involved in those roles, coming to community events, which is important to come into the community so they can see us as neuropathologists and what exactly we're going to do, but also implicitly representing underrepresented people. I think it was already brought up that it's important not only to come into underrepresented communities, but for our staff and our faculty to look like them and have, like, share the beliefs and also be involved with our REC programs to educate future researchers. And I come and I also do talks with them as well, so that they can understand what I do, where I've come from, and then I could also understand from them when I'm talking to the community, what it is they're looking for, what are their fears, what are their concerns. Further compounding on my, actually, experience with our OR Core comes with what we call our lunch and learns. And one of the images you see, I'm showing brains or examples of, very sensitive examples of, brains and what it is, what it looks like when I'm looking at them, what are the sections that we take. We do these, before pandemic, we did them... We do these, before pandemic, we did them in person. We do them also virtually periodically. And we have people that sign up who are our current participants. And I found that there is always a lot of excitement, a lot of questions as to what we do, what we find. I talk about the pathology, I talk about the plaques, the tangles. I also discuss some of the research that we're able to produce and publish because of the gift of brain donation, which also sparks a lot of interest. And I also emphasize that it also not only helps our center, but researchers around the world who contact us for tissue. So I, just really reiterating the same idea of communication and involvement. And as Dr. G had mentioned earlier, partnership with your community and with your participants, giving something back, giving information, taking in information from them as well. Another thing that we do, of course, is literature. You know, our brain donation program brochures are quite important. And we also provide a biannual newsletter that provides a plethora of information. Going a step further, I also am involved with our psychosocial core, or I should say with family meetings, as was discussed. At the end, there's also an autopsy report, which I'm also involved in. We're very busy. So produce these autopsy reports. And for families that are interested, we do, or I do, meet with them and discuss the reports. Sometimes it's one person, three people, four people. We bring all the chairs in. And I started doing it in my office because if they want to see the slides, I show them the slides so they can see what it looks like and what that's about. And in doing that, we've also been able to generate another generation of donors. They come back and they say, hey, you don't remember me, but I spoke to you at like 1:00 AM about donation. And you went over the reports. And we would also like to partake in donations. So I guess my overall message and my overall personal experience is being involved, being very integrally involved with your cores, talking to them, talking about best measures. And we're all very busy and not everybody has like, you know, you may not be able to physically go there as a neuropathologist. But even virtually or having some kind of meeting has been helpful, or a lunch and learn, for them to see that there is a person who will take care of them when the time comes. And if they have questions, this is what we can talk about. And as was discussed, and I'm glad that Nancy brought it up, even if they're not bringing up the question, we should just bring it up to them and not be so scared to have these open discussions. So thank you for your time. And I hope we could all learn more from each other on this. Thank you.
And last but not least, before we open it up for discussion, is Darby.
Thank you, Crystal. I think we're coming full circle here. I think many of you in this room, because I haven't really seen this room change over the last couple of hours, heard my talk that started the last session regarding the retention pathway that we've implemented to maintain relationships with families who get tired of participating in longitudinal research over time. And it's really can be a threat and a barrier to the ultimate retention of brain donation. So I just wanted to, I think that all I have to say before we get to some questions here is that I really appreciate the voices of those who have gone through this process. And I want to thank you, Nancy and Katie and Tish, because you're the voices that we need to hear as centers. And I think all of us have these voices. And I am so inspired today to talk to those people in our own center because that's who we should be lifting up. And you're the ones that are going to help us talk to those who are really struggling with this decision. I think it's one thing for research assistants and clinicians to have this discussion, but there's nothing like the stories that you have shared with us today. So thank you.
All right, so let's open it up for some questions. Please come to the mic if you have those questions. Also, we're monitoring those online, so in the chat. So that's great. Hey, I think we'll start with our friend Annie Cohen to the right.
Hi, thanks for all of that. That was really a wonderful session. And I'm coming up more as a family member than as a researcher right now. We donated my dad's brain about a year and a half ago. And the Pittsburgh team was absolutely wonderful in helping my family, who was resistant, even with me doing this kind of work, to donate. And one of the things that my mom still frequently asks me that I wonder if people are thinking about is, where is his brain? What are they doing with it? Is it okay? What happens if the freezer breaks? What happens if, you know, these are the thoughts that as a wife of 45 years, who's still mourning, is asking. And I wonder if anyone has thought of ways that we can continue to engage these families with that kind of information? Or, you know, here's a picture of the laboratory where your loved one's brain is going to live. Because just like we value his cremains, she wants to know where his brain, which was the most brilliant part of him, is. So I just wonder if anyone has thought of how to approach that? Because I would love to see us do more of that.
Yes, Arlene, I think you'd be great.
Hi. I think you've given me new material for my lunch and learn. I haven't, I've been asked that question during the sessions, like where is the brain kept? Where does it go? Easily answered question. Of course, you know, it's stored. And we could definitely add that to let them know in giving them more information. Again, as I said, rather than waiting for them to ask us, then maybe we can implicitly give them that information. Thank you for that, because I hadn't thought of adding that in. Thank you.
Sophia.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone. It was really a great talk. It was really great to hear a 360 perspective, you know, from the participant's side. People have actually worked and had that sort of lived experience, you know, as a spouse and are, of course, are great, or colleagues. So I think, I was just actually looking at the really great NIA brain donation social media. And I think there's stuff in English and Spanish. And I may have overlooked it, but I think NAC has UDS Chinese. So I don't know if there was a, if it's maybe hidden somewhere and I forgot to click on the link, or if there's a plan and evolution for that. So that's question number one. Question number two, I was a little bit more, has anyone actually done a study looking at like the family experience based on the relationship with the person, you know, who's deceased? So the experience of the spouse versus the children, versus a sibling, or in some cases, even the parent of a brain donation? And so the reason I bring this up, as I was talking to, you know, we run a FTD support group. And some people continue to come even after their loved ones passed away. And the spouse found it very helpful to actually understand what the brain donation, what the experience was. But the kids actually had a very different experience because it was a genetic disorder. They found it very stigmatizing. And they, and the way the final confirmation was actually very, very disconcerting for them. And they were still processing that. And it was affecting like their own personal lives as well. So I was wondering if there's been different studies looking at like the relationship as well, as how brain donation is perceived and what we should be doing to help then support, you know, those family members? You know, they're still, they're still part of our family, you know. But those family members who have gone through the whole process of brain donation, making sure that they're getting the right support, whether it's the spouse, the children, the siblings, after the brain donation occurs. And that's, maybe it's relevant to what Annie just stepped off, talked about.
Great question. Darby?
Well, I was thinking, I don't know of any studies right offhand. But I think that what you are commenting on is so important that we need to take into consideration. I think what you're saying is that are we, are we paying attention to families after they get the results? And what that impact is on those families? And I thank you for raising that. And I think that's something that we do need to keep in mind. And be available as a center to those families. And I, I hope that that's a message that I think we give as a center, that we're available to discuss. I know that our clinical core leader is always there to discuss the results of the autopsy. But it can't be just a one and done. If you need additional support over time, I mean, we've, they've given a lot to us over many years. So I think continuing to be available to them is essential.
Can I bring in Katie for this as well? Being that you were obviously a caregiver to your spouse and now your father, you've served in two roles. Is there a difference there that may speak to Dr. Wong's question?
Well, I think, for me, no. I, you know, I think I don't worry so much because I think of the phrase, the horse has left the barn, right? So my perspective, and again, this is not going to be everyone's perspective, is if I can learn something about our family's medical history that could inform protective or preventative factors for me later, I think that that's helpful. Now, my sister, she might not want to learn that information. But I think, and thinking about my son, right? He was a young child when I decided to gather that information about his dad. But my thought was, well, it's his choice when he's an adult to access it. But I've done my role to make sure the information's there. So that's oftentimes what I talk with families. If they say, well, I don't know if I want to know, or I don't know if I want to do that. And talking with them about opportunities to participate in research, to contribute to the science, and that they could decide at another time if they want to engage for clinical information. And just like Darby's saying, our team is there to offer that expert guidance, like meeting with a genetic counselor, right, to find out what's relevant. I guess I would just say on a practical level, though, thinking about bandwidth. Like just trying to keep up with supporting people who are coping with the challenges of caring for their loved one who's living. How can we also support people after? And something that we do offer is that once you're a member of support group, you're always a member of support group. So you can come back. And I find that actually, that's helpful for other members to see, oh, what was it like? How did it feel for this member to donate their loved one's brain? How would that affect me? They can ask questions, not just of doctors or staff, but of other members. And that can be healing and supportive, too.
Thank you. Dirk?
Thank you, Crystal. So I've got a couple of comments, I think. Dirk Keane from University of Washington. First of all, about engaging with families. I think it's really difficult to, it's not difficult, it just takes time. And so what we do is, once we have finalized a neuropath report, we invite the families to come either meet with us virtually or to come onsite to tour the lab and talk to the neuropathologist and actually try to get a sense of what the jargon in that report really means. And families just love that. We offer for them to come and actually see and hold their loved one's brain. And all but one family has taken advantage of that. And that has been incredible. It's also generated quite a bit of philanthropy and engagement from families that have been really supportive of our neuropath core efforts. The one thing I think that we could do, at least in our site, that I've really wanted to do but haven't been able to for resources and time and all kinds of stuff, is to have like an annual barbecue of donor families to get together and tell everybody, you know, here's what we've been doing this year. Here's the research that's being done with your loved one's brains. I think that would be incredibly engaging. And I just, I keep saying I want to do this and I haven't gotten to it. Maybe that's something that ORE and neuropath cores could organize. I do think we need to have better communication across the neuropath cores with respect to resources. And some of the stuff I've heard tonight is just so compelling. I would love for all of you to be able to talk to our Alzheimer's Center and our community for Alzheimer's disease research. But it's not just Alzheimer's Centers, right? We have, what, 35 Centers with neuropath cores? Going back to Nina and her incredible, important influence on everything we do. Nina brought the Neurobiobank and Tish and the Alzheimer's Center neuropath cores together a few years ago. We've been working in a working group. And we were fortunate to try to engage different brain bank networks together to be able to try to cooperate better. And it's been enlightening. So Tish, we just have the results of our four years of collaboration. Tish had 1,600 Alzheimer's disease-related people contact the Neurobiobank through the Brain Donor Project. She was able to refer about 700 of those people to Neurobiobanks. But there were also 651 families who were declined. And so when we talk about, you know, how important it is from a family perspective, I think we need to think about the people out in the community who aren't in our clinical cores, who aren't in our Alzheimer's Centers, who want to participate, who want to do this and who can't. And the reason they can't is because we don't have the resources to handle all those brains. In our pilot, our Alzheimer's Centers, and this is Pittsburgh, with Julia Kofler and Yale and Anita and UW, we were able to actually have Tish refer 93 of those people who would have been declined to our Alzheimer's Centers to donate their brain through that pilot that was funded through the NIA, through Nina, and a supplement. There's no more funding for that. But it was a real success story about engaging with families who wouldn't, who aren't in these clinical studies. I think it's really important to consider, you know, what we, what we are doing, but also what we could do better with respect to really engaging. I don't think a family who's tried to donate and has been rejected is going to be spreading a lot of, you know, good words about how engaged they were and how appreciated they felt when it came time to do that. So I don't, I think that's more of a comment. If people have any ideas about how we can improve this, how we could lobby for better resources to be able to accommodate those people who want to participate in research who can't, especially in minoritized communities, I think it would be really great.
Thank you, Dirk. I do think there's a note for Nancy here to comment and about, say, some of the strategies that you outlined. So maybe we can hear a little about from Nancy, what she thinks.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. So he indicated that such things as, say, coming into the lab, being able to hold a loved one's brain? And I wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
That would have been incredible. I really would have welcomed that opportunity. For me, the explanation came, I received a copy of the report and then there was a telephone conversation. But I would have appreciated even more information and actually to see the physical location and see slides. That would have been really incredible. I would have appreciated that.
Thank you.
If I can chime in, Crystal? Just a quick point. My dad wound up being an anatomical body donor as well as a brain donor. And it's, it's possible to do both. It's a little tricky. But the body donation program had a ceremony every year for families who had donated such. And the medical students, doctors who graduated from the program, came in to talk about how important it was, how many times they learned compassion from dealing with their body in the anatomy lab. And we could, I love the idea of doing something like that for brain donors. Yeah, sharing the love afterwards that keeps the conversation going is a great idea. I'm going to have to think about that myself.
But Tish, I had also a follow-up from Dirk's question for you. How did you come into contact with his ADRC to partner with him? So maybe others in the room can do so as well.
Oh, anybody can. Happy to work with anybody who's interested. But at the time, what happened was, as Dirk mentioned, there was funding for this pilot. And so I'm not sure exactly how those centers stepped up to be part of the pilot. Nina, I think, had a hand in that as well. But it was great because, you know, we get a lot of people just pre-registering for donation. And up until that funding arrived, we didn't really know what to do with Alzheimer's patients and how to manage that supply. As you all may know, you know, because of the demographic bubble we're in right now, there are a lot of people out there who are passing from different kinds of dementia. And so to be able to say, yes, let's let the research community define the, we're most interested in, and move those over to neurobiobank sites. But the ADRC centers were then available for any kind of dementia diagnosis and older controls. Older controls within their catchment areas also went their way. But while that pilot may no longer be in effect, we've got plenty of resources I'd love to share with any of the centers who need information about talking to families or referring the controls that you or referring the controls that you may not be able to deal with. Yeah, I'd love to discuss. Thank you, Crystal. Got it. Right here to the right.
Hi, I'm Jessica Repeat. I'm an assistant professor at Arizona State University, and I'm just coming into the field, and I really appreciate all your stories and all the work that you've been doing. One of the big problems that I've been facing as a cerebellar researcher, doing comparative anatomy work and trying to understand how the cerebellum is affected in these diseases, is our, is the samples for the cerebellum. And I've seen a lot of pictures so far at this conference where the cerebellum has been removed from imaging and other things. And I guarantee you, it is involved in all these disorders, especially the behavioral variant of FTD. And if I was going to ask you, can you please send me some CRUSE 1, CRUSE 2 samples? I guarantee that will not happen. And what's happening is that pathology samples, when we get slides, are not labeled for the cerebellum. And so if I was going to hand you some random slides from the frontal cortex and not label them, I bet we'd all have some trouble doing that research. And so there are thousands of slides, probably millions of slides across the world, the cerebellum, where it's not labeled where it's been actually taken from. The cerebellum's quite a large structure. And different lobules actually have different control and different function, but that's only been recently really recognized and appreciated. Also, regions like the inferior olive and cerebellar nucleus, these input and output structures, people are not, it's very difficult to get these samples. And so what we need as cerebellar researchers are whole brain samples, which I'm starting to be able to get my hands on a little bit more, so we can section them ourselves. And so we know exactly where we're studying and, and being able to see these regions like the cerebellar nucleus that are heavily involved in these disorders. So my only, I guess, ask is that for these brain donation programs, is that if they are sectioned or samples are removed for the cerebellum, if they could be labeled, so we can actually do this work.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I think your, your point is well-received. Different centers definitely have different specialties. You know, there are a lot of parts of the brains that we, you know, we store, and of course, there'll be researchers who are looking for particular things, but if at that time we labeled it, of course, it would be more helpful. I would just lend out a suggestion, like reach out to centers, so that as we're moving prospectively, we'll think of you and think of your project and look to collaborate and say, you know what, when I piecemeal this cerebellum, I'm going to do so in this way and label it in this way, so that this particular researcher who's looking into this aspect could look at that. It's not impossible. It's just we, we all have, you know, different purviews. And just to comment again on NIA funding and Nina, I mean, I was privy to a pilot grant for, what was it, supporting a newly-trained neuropathologist to become a core leader, which totally happened. And also, in doing that, I was able to visit other centers. So I also got to see firsthand over at Emory what they do. I was able to see in Kentucky with Dr. Nelson what he does, and everyone does something a little bit different. But being able to know that, and to Dirk's comment about us being able to have more conversations with, with one another, would be able to have that conversation and have, you know, known that this is what you're looking for and better supply that for you. So that's just my comment. But thank you for that.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Arlene. But same with NeuroBiobank. If you haven't been to that site, all those samples are very well characterized, of high quality and labeled. And if you can't find what you not, what you need, they are very open to conversations about how to get you what you need. It's at neurobiobank.nih.gov. Thank you. We'll go to this side.
Hi, I'm Erin Connolly with the Duke Neuropathology Core. So first of all, thank you so much for sharing your stories and your work. It's so inspiring. And in my experience with coordinating brain donations, one of the things that we run into, I'm constantly in awe of how enthusiastic these participants are about brain donation. Starting this, I thought it might be a sensitive topic, and I find that so many of them love to talk about it and are enthusiastic to help. And I'm finding that later in life, a lot of participants will tend to move out of state. And so I'm wondering, how can we best sort of share resources and communicate and connect so that, that the people that move away, say, across the country, are still able to participate in a brain donation program? And sort of how can we share resources best that if I come up with a process that works really well at Duke, how can I share that with other centers so that they can also benefit?
Oh, I'd love to talk with you more about this, because at Northwestern, we have many, many of our cohort is out of state. And so we, they, they come to us from all over the country and commit to brain donation, and our research assistants are very much in touch with the families regarding planning, advanced planning for that brain donation. So I'm happy to provide details on that with you, if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we have time for one last quick question, and I think we'll go here.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Teri Ali Hernandez, and I work at the Columbia ADRC. I just wanted to quickly say thank you for sharing about the work you do and sharing your personal stories. Nancy, thank you for such beautiful poem. Really touched my heart. And I just wanted to quickly ask how we deal, and this was something that was mentioned during one of the presentations, with the pushback when it comes to talking about brain donation. I think I have identified a need for community conversations, and even though the pushback doesn't necessarily come from individuals, when we go to our community partners, sometimes they tell us like, well, maybe don't talk about brain donation, don't, don't talk about participating in research. And I think that that is just something that we should be more open to talking about, as we mentioned. But how do we do so when we, when we go to certain community organizations?
In the FTD unit, we just wrapped up an R01 for caregiver research, where we looked at advanced care planning, education, and conversations with caregiver, family caregivers of individuals living with dementia. And what we learned about that was that families are really brave to have these, what clinicians often anticipate as scary conversations. Family members know that where this disease trajectory is heading, you know? And I think that what I heard from families, we had 130 caregivers, and I worked with all of them, they are looking for the clinician to be the leader for this important conversation because they trust you. So the clinician can be the neurologist, it can be the study coordinator, it can be a neuropathologist, it can be, it's someone who they look to, a trusted source for accurate information and guidance for them. And then they need to take that information back and talk with their family about their values, their goals of care. And sometimes those decisions will happen separately, but I think it's for the clinicians to feel empowered, that you can bring this up as, hey, did you know our program has this opportunity for you? You have a lot of questions. Did you know that in a report, after you donate your loved one's brain, can maybe provide some answers? So I think it's presenting it not as, when your loved one dies, you know, could they go through this procedure that maybe you've never even thought of and seems uncomfortable and scary? It's more, it's the opportunity to contribute. And then addressing the questions that families ask when they ask them. A lot of families actually don't ask me about the specifics of like what actually happens. They want to know, oh, how long will it take? Could I still have an open casket if I wanted? And then, so sometimes I think as clinicians, we, you know, worry more than the families are worried in a lot of ways. That's just something I've experienced.
I just wanted to add quickly, sorry. Thank you for your comment and your question. And I think also just to add to what Katie's mentioned, like a lot of times when you're going into communities, particularly also underrepresented communities who are just, you know, being new to research or being new to trusting research and such, I mean, I think it's important to remember there's a continuity of the relationship with the people. So maybe you don't get that, okay, I'm going to do brain donation the first time you go in there, right? But I think it's important, as we mentioned, to still mention it. It's never good to, to, you know, bury the lead. Like I tell fellows in residence, like, talk about it in the beginning, let it like kind of sit, let it simmer. We're still there for other things. We're still there to screen. We're still there to do the MOCO. We still want you to be assessed on the UDS. But every time, bring up brain donation. Every time, bring up the scary questions, the scary, you know, thought about it. Bring up the research that we've done and what's been able to be established because of it. Because you may get a slow yes is better than a quick no in the end when you bring it up later on. So yeah, I would say follow up on following up with your participants. Thank you.
Looks like this is a rich discussion, but we are over, so we'll stop here. People, they'll be out there. Thank you for all the speakers, panelists, online, Tish here. Thank you. [applause]